But change them out. No?
Can't hear you, Rodney.
If it's C2, it's C2. You know, maybe you just have your parameters of what can go in there. If he falls within the guidelines of C2 requirements, if someone else purchased it, they'd have to comply with the C2 parameters, the definition.
Well, okay. My vision here is that that's just too much commercial.
Well...
He can accomplish what he wants to accomplish, in my opinion, with less acres.
So, you were discussing earlier, you said one home per acre or some similar thing. Didn't that what you said, something like that? What was you saying earlier? On how much room a house would take?
Well, I, if there's going to be three homes there, that's going to take approximately three acres. That leaves four acres that's commercial. What might happen there?
This is basically for display purposes.
Yeah. Display and storage.
Yeah, this is display and storage. So, it's a matter of, he needs to have room for expansion of his business to put more homes on there for display. Not necessarily three. It may be more.
There's...
Well, earlier, I don't know what our discussion was, but we said, I don't anticipate more than three homes there. So, I'm just...
I'll give you an example. So, when I have a display home, I have to purchase that home. It's not given to me by manufacturer. So, I was never born wealthy. I'm not wealthy today. For me to afford more than three homes, I don't know if anybody in this room, maybe they can afford more than three homes, but I can tell you I can't. So, as far as for display wise, there should not be more than three homes. Maybe, you know, down the road, it may hit four if we're lucky, and that's only because if, you know, the community has a project or something similar to that.
So, that proves my point. If there's going to be three homes there, what's going to happen about the other four acres that we've approved to be commercial?
Well, I, just to echo what Tim was saying, if, if he was so fortunate to expand, that would actually be a good thing. But I think mainly what he's saying is that there's a turnaround time. So, so when somebody orders a home, or two, or, you know, 10, he needs space to be able to store that before they're actually put up. And, you know, there's a turnaround time with all this. So, there will be a space needed to store.
Supposing though, something else comes along that's much better than that, and he's got commercial property.
Right. There's a lot of things that can happen, and that's the joys of starting a business, right?
Yeah. I'll give you an example. I'm not just a dealer. I'm an installer. I'm a general service person. So, all of our existing manufactured homes, right now, I'm the only person licensed in town to fix them. So, if, like say, I did expand my yard, or I put another shop up, it would be to store my, maybe my tools, or other equipment to install these homes, things of that nature. But as far as another businesses, that would be a whole nother rezoning thing, and that's not my intentions. I mean, I can tell you right now, my dealer's license and my install license is not easy to get. And I'll be honest with you, I can tell you how Elko County, they don't even have their own installer. So, all Elko County and every installers that is coming to you that's bringing homes, they're coming out of Idaho. So, as far as, I think we should be very fortunate that we have, I mean here, I mean, you know what I mean to say like that, but it's something we should be happy to have.
And these homes, are they all modulars?
No, they're not all modulars. I do, I can get, yes.
Are they double wides?
Yes. Double wides, I can get single wides. I can get tiny homes. I can get modular homes. I can get them from, I have two manufacturers now. I have Fleetwood and I have Champion.
Okay. Now, you were talking about other equipment. This lot back here, you have, it's included in the seven acres. Like you have your equipment. You're like, other people are seeing, we're getting a lot of junk on the highway. I think that's what people are concerned with. If you have equipment or installation stuff, you have place to park that back behind. So, I think this is fully junk over here too.
I mean, there is, I do have a 40 by 60 shop there. So, I will give you an example. My install tools to install a mobile home, that's $20,000, and I, I do not let that sit out in the weather.
But I'm just saying, for people's concerns, you'll have basically modular, modular homes, and then if someone purchases a bunch of storage before installation, so you're not going to have a bunch of junk piled out there. If you have anything, it'll be in your shop.
Yes. I mean, I'm just playing random homes. I'm not, I don't want to show the whole town garbage. That's not my intention.
There may be concern. That's why I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Will people live in these homes?
No. No, no. They won't even be powdered to them.
They're just modulars.
So, you've got enough acres there, you can put three homes on.
I will have one home on one five acre lot for myself, yes.
On one of the other lots?
On the, yes. Right across from the seven acre lot, yeah. I'll give you an example of the one that'd be right across from Bill Buck's. That's where the buffer came in. You know what I mean? It gave a buffer, a little bit residential in between me and him from a commercial business.
And I would figure that whatever goes into that space, becomes commercial, will be pursuant to whatever the, the conditional, the conditional special use permit outlines. So, so in other words, you can't just put anything in there. It depends upon whatever is outlined in the conditional special use permit.
Glad. I like, when you said master plan, there's a buffer. That was my concern. There is a buffer. I want to see commercial. I'd like to see commercial along the highway. So, I think, I guess I wasn't, you know, whatever you guys told me, it seems like it's followed through with what was kind of recommended. And it's not spot zoning. It's actually a continuation. It still has RA5.
And the master plan is about 22 years old now?
Yeah. You know how hard it is to go through those, yeah?
Yeah, exactly.
So, from your point of view, are we going to, when we get done, after we approve this, we will approve a special use permit?
That's, that's, yeah, that's, we haven't, yeah, we haven't come to that point yet.
Oh, we may or may not.
We haven't come to that point yet. Right now, all we're doing is we're just making, taking a vote on dividing the parcel. That's it.
Look, I, I'm just going to say, say something. I don't think it should be this hard to start a business. I don't. And I, I know we all, we, that we have to be, take our cautions, and there's been, you know, opposition and so forth. There's also been a lot of people who are very excited and voiced that. I've been in favor for this. I think it's a great improvement. It'd be great for our community. I've been in favor of this from the very beginning. I'm still in favor of it. And I just want to apologize that you've been through what you had. This is a multi-step process, and, you know, we're just, we're still just in the very beginning. I don't see any problem. We're just dealing with the highway frontage, identifying that, and I know you have several steps beyond that. So, yeah, go ahead.
So, for example, I have sold one house to our community. So, I think we haven't had a licensed dealer here since, what's his name that lived out on the highway? About to buy Blue Diamond anyhow. He hasn't sold houses here, years. I'll give you an example. White Plains County gets over $7,000 on that one sale that I, that I have, that I sold here. So, as far as for anybody that's living here and going outside of here and buying houses in other counties and whatnot, just think of all those $7,000 that our county's missing out on due to this. And I'll give you an example. I've been doing this, coming out of this for like eight months now. So, I mean, just as for me and the county, this is, that's a lot of money that we've missed out on. Because I can tell you right now, I've been helping do, other companies come here doing installs, or other companies come here and doing this all, and it doesn't pass inspection. Because this crew come from Idaho, and they call me, "Hey, Tim, can you go help pass this inspection on this house?" So, it does, it, it, it's hurting our town not having this. You know what I mean? I get it, like, a lot of people's not happy, but at the same time, I grew up here. I played sports here. My whole family plays sports here. I can tell you, if, you know what I mean, I do well here, I will give back to the community. I will give back to the kids. My kids go to school here. As far as these other dealerships that everybody's buying houses to, guess where all those, all that money's going to? Their county. Our county's missing out on this stuff. You know, I mean, it's something to think about, that's all.
Well, that's a very good point, and I think there's far more reasons to move forward with this than, than to keep holding back on it, absolutely.
Do you want to allow for any more public comment, or are you going to close public comment, finish your discussion session, or? You allow public comment?
Is there any other public comments?
On this, on this topic?
Yeah, what happened to the three minutes?
So, we already, this three minutes.
There's not even a public comment on the first one half, actually.
Oh, okay. Look, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve this. I don't see any issues here with the parcel.
Well, we allow public comment. So, George wants public comment. If you want to limit it to three minutes, you can. If you want to extend the time, you can. It's up to the chairman.
Okay. George, what do you have to say?
On this topic.
On what?
On this topic, I mean.
You don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
I support Mr. Vardre in his endeavor. The issue before you is whether you're going to change that zoning to commercial. After that, you can't speculate. You can't tell any individual, you can't have more than two houses, or three cars, or any of that. The overall concern is what falls in that category, and forget the selective enforcement. There is concern from people living out there, and I can share that, that concern. There's enough frontage there where you can have ingress and egress, but as far as anyone being able to tell them, "Oh, no, you can't have three houses out there," I'd like to see 40 out there. Because that's progress. But when you're looking at this zoning, you've got to look at what the classification allows, and you cannot discriminate and selectively enforcing the law. You have a property out there in violation of Administrative Code, IRS 244.368. That's city and county. And you're looking the other way, now we're splitting hairs here. So, whatever's allowed, you keep that in mind, because that's what's going to happen. And you can't speculate on whether he will or he won't. Thank you.
Hey, George, and I actually agree with the first part of your statement there. You know, really, our job is not to micromanage someone's business that's, that falls under, you know, it being a commercial business. But we're not even there yet. All we're dealing with now is just parceling, and I would go ahead and move to approve the proposition.
So, are we closing any comment, and we're going to vote?
Up to you.
Okay, we'll close, we'll close comment. We'll go to the vote on this.
So, I'll move to approve.
Okay, it leaves. Most approve.
Just a second. We've gone through everything we've asked you to do.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the, the parcel change on this, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
What was your question?
We're voting on, on just this re-parcelling.
On the parcel?
Yeah.
Okay, aye, both ayes.
Okay. Got three, three ayes. Jesse, Leah, and myself. And one no. So... It passes. So, let's go to...
How long is it going to be before this comes up again? Is it going to delay, or, I see it's two, two issues there.
Well, we're on, we're coming to item C here, which is...
Is there any way, just a suggestion, and can we move the item, Tim's item up, just to so it's back to back, and then do the...
Yeah, as long as it's on the agenda, you can remove, you can move it.
Okay. I think they would appreciate that.
I just put them that way because I didn't want the other people that are here for a couple of other agenda items that are probably going to be really quick, to have to sit through all of this anyway.
Yeah, because we've got his neck.
I understand. Okay.
We've got his neck here, so...
And he's patiently waiting.
Okay. We'll, we'll roll with his neck. Item C. Public hearing for consideration of an application for reclassification on zoning on property. Applicant is Nicholas Z. and Gladys G. Patress. Requesting the property to change from C2, General Commercial District, to R2, R250 Residential. Property address and or general location is 139 Nevada Avenue, Healy, Nevada, APN is 001-128-04.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, historically, that area down there between Healy Avenue and Fay Avenue, from Altman Street down to South Street, had been zoned residential. In approximately 1956, Shell Oil was going to come in and put in a gas station. So, they picked up the property on the corner where Foxfire, any number of gas station names, was on the corner of Altman and Healy Avenue. Then there was 1776 Altman Avenue that the Fonz owned, 139 Nevada Avenue that the Hudson family owned, 130 Healy Avenue that was owned by, at that time, Robert and Connie Lewis, and 142 Healy Avenue, which was bought by my parents. Everything from there on down, including those properties, was all residential. When Shell Oil came in to put in the gas station, they changed 130 Healy Avenue, 142 Healy Avenue, 1776 Altman, and 139 Nevada into commercial for the big gas station. The big gas station fell through. So, consequently, all these years, until several months ago, when Mr. Simpson from Keller Williams put in an application for 1776 Altman to be changed to R250, that left the spot zoning of 142 and 139 as, as was, which was commercial. Because with advancing age and everything, I'd like to get all my ducks in a row, now that I know what ducks look like. So, that's why I'm coming forth with those. I understand they are two different agenda items, but for now, we'll address the 139 Nevada Avenue. Historically, that was a residence until we had it torn down approximately seven years ago, and cleaned up the property, and now it's, it has the potential to be residential again, but it's just a matter of consolidating all my properties into wild wood description. And thank you.
Thank you.
Ask, do a question. Nick? That 805, what is that classified at? Because I don't see the other company maps to show. The one just south of it? Is that residential too? Not an office here? Because here's the...
Okay, this is the old Keller Williams. This is 139 Nevada.
Right. But this has a gas station.
Yes, this is a gas station.
These are all residents. Okay, what is this one's zone?
This one, right now, is owned to R250.
Okay. So, it's not spot zoning here. This is all, all around you is...
Yes. This is, this is commercial. This is commercial. This is residential. This is commercial, and this is residential.
Okay. Or this whole, when you were looking at the gas station, it was all going to be this whole area here?
Yes, it was going to include here, this whole section.
Because I could see this commercial, this commercial, this commercial, but no need for that if they're not going to be all that all around.
Yes, this one just changed several months ago.
Okay, okay.
That was the Keller Williams building that was just changed. So, I see this is a good thing. Just basically getting everything in order.
We're moving on to discussion for possible action.
And we're still in public hearing?
You got to ask, is anybody else? Anyone else have comment?
I think it's a good thing. I mean, you know, he's, I'm trying to go to commercial. He's going residential, and it does kind of show that nothing's ever permanent. You know, I mean, you can go vice versa one way or another. You can go back. I understand it's not that easy, but in the situation, it, you know what I mean, it does, I think it's a good thing. It's, it shows everybody, you know what I mean, how it can be switched back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Any more public comment on this item? Close public comment, and then we'll go on to item 1B, discussion for possible action. Approval of application for reclassification of zoning on property. Applicants Nicholas Z. and Gladys G. Patress are requesting the property to be changed from C2, General Commercial District, to R250 Residential District. Property address and or general location is 139 Nevada Street, Avenue, Nevada Avenue, Healy, Nevada, APN is 001-128-04. Okay, open that up.
Well, I, I would, for what, I'm really against spot zoning, and I don't see this as spot zoning. I mean, it was set up at one time. It looked like this is the Altman, I mean, Tyree, right? Well, they parceled it out. It isn't. Everything beyond that is all residential. It shows continuity, and I would make a motion on 804 to change out from C2.
Basically reversing the spot zoning.
Well, yeah, well, it wasn't spot zoning at the time. It was frontage. But now it's, they parceled it out. So, you still have the furniture's commercial, except for the one where they built the house and lived there. But this is, now you have residential, commercial residential. I'd hate to see that. I like to see it, oh, they already have the big eight over here. They have this. I don't see this, it would conflict with the business. I don't see it really. I'd say it complies more with tying into the residential.
Yeah.
That's just my feeling.
Right. The, the commercial, it used as commercial anyway, is it?
It was commercial because of the gas station that was supposed to have been put in there that did not get put in.
So, was it ever, I'm just curious, was it ever in use, that little gas station?
Oh, no, that's the one further down the street.
Okay.
That's the little gas station across from, across from Cruz Inn.
Okay.
That's the 806, right, isn't it?
Yeah. So, this is, initially, there was supposed to be a large gas station put in there. That whole thing fell through, but the zoning remained.
Right. Yeah, Tim's absolutely right. This is a perfect example of highway frontage, but in this case, it just didn't work out, and I think it's a, I agree with Jesse. It'd be a good move to get everything sorted out there. So, I would also be in favor.
You got a motion?
Any do?
I made a motion on 804. Retire that C2 zoning and make it an R250 zoning for residential. Tie those properties together.
Okay, Jesse?
I'll second it.
Okay, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? That passes. Now, we move to item 2B. Approval of application for reclassification and...
Yeah, 2A.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one. 2A. Application for a public hearing for the consideration of an application for reclassification of zoning on property. Applicants Nicholas Z. and Gladys P. Patress are requesting the property to be changed C2, General Commercial, to R250 Residential District. Property address, general location is 142 Healy Avenue, Healy, Nevada, APN is 001-128-08. So, public hearing?
Same argument as before. That 142 Healy Avenue is a house that my parents bought in 1952, and it was in 1956 when it was rezoned. That area had always been commercial till Shell, Shell Oil came in, and wanted to make the grad station, which never happened. Then in later years, I can't remember the timeframe on it, and Mr. George Maurer came in and put in that little station that Leah's talking about.
Yeah.
And that's been defunct now for a number of years.
I can't even remember the last time I gassed up there. Okay, any more public comment on this, this item?
If you'd like to.
We'll close public comment, and we will, we will open this up for discussion for possible action. The approval of the application for reclassification of zoning on property. Applicants Nicholas Z. and Gladys G. Patress are requesting the property to be changed from C2, General Commercial District, to R250 Residential District. Property address and or general location is 142 Healy Avenue, Healy, Nevada, APN is 001-128-08. Okay, discussion?
I think for the same practice, and it's tied on to that, it's all residential there. It isn't frontage. I see no reason not to make a motion and go from C2 to R250. Does this make sense?
Yeah.
Yep, same issue. I would, I would go ahead and move to approve this as well.
Okay, so, that...
Seconded.
Okay.
Did I make the motion?
Leah made, Leah made the motion. Jesse seconds.
Okay.
Okay. We'll put that up to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? It passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Okay. I move on to public hearing. In consideration of an application for reclassification of zoning on property. Applicant Timothy Vardre wishes to change the zoning from RA5 Ranch Agricultural to C2, General Commercial District. Address is 800 East 93rd Street, North, Healy, Nevada. The front half is a divided parcel. The parcel is APN 010-400-11, Section 1, Township 16 North, Range 63 East of the J&amp;M subdivision. So, that's a public hearing. Open it up for that.
Well, I'll get up and say again, all the people out there are boos. I know the young lady thinks everything's beat isn't great. But it don't work out that way, as you can see what happened up on the court. You have to take care of that. But everybody don't want it out there. Tim wants it. You know, it'd be nice if you had a map here that shows exactly what he's got in mind, instead of a map that you get flashed up and down, and suddenly you can't look at it. This is like a speed read. But I would like to see you put it off until we can get all the hard troops there and get the map up here, get a flat map that shows just exactly what's going to happen. You know, you're talking about, you guys have got maps. You can see it over here. Nobody else here can see it.
Can we put up that?
Yeah. No, no, I mean, that's...
And, and do we have another copy of this?
I'm not a copy of that, but you can hardly tell what the hell it is. You know, I live out there. It'd be nice to have a flat map that shows exactly what he's going to do about this property.
It's C2.
Right.
And you saw the frontage.
He wants this whole big chunk here, right?
But I didn't want to do that whole frontage. You don't want to do just a piece of the frontage. You're spotting again.
Yeah, and if you notice here, well, this particular, under the master plan, that entire section is I in the red zone. So, we're only talking about the strip along the highway versus section.
Yeah, I don't know. Of course you can put the trailer.
That I don't know.
What I mean is, you know, you're going to come through here and could have put anything over here on the commercial property?
Yeah, commercials aren't allowed, I guess, aren't we?
How wide is a commercial property on the highway? It shows that on a commercial property on the side of the highway, but that little, how wide is this?
223.
Talking about the master plan?
Yeah.
It was this entire parcel.
Over here, but this, that's not all the J&amp;M.
No, it's, I highlighted it on this map.
And this is just where the highway is.
Correct.
How wide is it from here to there? From the highway to Tim's fence? 100 feet, 200?
Right away, bud? I guess I'm not understanding the question. This currently, 223 feet.
I, I know, but what's the master plan? How wide does it say the...
Master plan includes this entire parcel.
I don't, I'm talking, it's all the way down the highway.
The rest of the property?
Yeah.
You know, you're talking about the rest of the...
It's roughly 200 feet.
It's roughly two hundred feet, that's about two hundred and twenty-three is on the diagram.
I see, because...
It's roughly two hundred feet.
The only, as far as the junk garbage, uh...